Feet for an attached garage. This is located at thirteen oh one Roland Lane. Legal descriptions in the packet here. Property is owned R three medium density residential. Mark.
Notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. Um applicant would like to build a twenty eight by thirty two attached garage um to the rear side of his place. Um access would be off of North Foster Street. You'd have to cut down some trees to get to it. There was one letter returned in favor that made the packet and one uh response that opposed that did not make the packet. But you have that in front of you. Um he did bring up that there's an easement on the south side. That is a five foot easement there. The applicant's requesting a three foot um setback there. That that letter also said though that he'd be in favor of uh it being at ten foot instead of the twenty five foot. Can I answer any questions that you have for me? Um applicants here if you have any questions for him as well.
Okay. Any questions before we bring him forward? Do you want anything to the statement? I don't know where you're sitting.
No.
Nothing to add? So who's in favor of the ten foot setback?
Beth, your uh letter that you received today.
Disapprove, okay.
Yep.
We should have you come forward anyway. Question I think I have for you is why five foot or why three foot versus say the five or ten foot? Come up to the podium over here and state your name.
I'm Morris Hartman. Um the reason I wanted to go to three foot is because I want uh I want to build a twenty eight foot addition onto the house. And uh I need to get within four for sure. I went three because that's the offset with with the other sides of the property.
Okay. So what is the easement at five feet? What is the easement for?
Utility easement. Um I did find that and it's right here. There's five foot utility easement, five feet on each side of property line. Are there any utilities back there right now?
Uh just cable.
What would that do to your plan if we went to five foot?
I could live with it.
Does it have to be that size or can you go out toward the east a little bit more or?
Uh yeah, because of the east boundary. It's it's such a tapered lot, you know, it's it's very narrow in the back.
Cause it's the thirty two goes east west and the twenty eight's north south, correct?
Yeah, yes, correct.
You can't live with a smaller garage?
I could, but I don't want to.
I know it's your land and that's what the the deal is, but you know, we gotta respect the other and plus the easement. But in order to build the project like that, you might have to accept a a smaller building.
Understood.
Yeah, I would I would hate for the utility to come through here and take yourself wall out for you. I mean, that'd be the that'd be the problem, so if you could live with five, I'd be supportive of a five, but not three.
Um I could live with five, like I said earlier. Um I do have to move the gas line. The gas line is a lot closer to the house. It's it's eight feet away from the backside of the house, so um that would have to be moved.
Yep.
I've been in contact with Northwestern, but I haven't heard back from them, so.
Okay.
Public Works recommend that you uh do not approve it unless it's not within easement, meaning at least five feet.
Now, can we can we recommend that or how does that work here?
Yep, you can recommend that. You just can't go more. So you can say we could recommend two feet instead of the three feet, but you can go four feet, five feet. You can be more restrictive, not less restrictive.
Okay, so you got an overhang on this here of twelve inches, twenty four inches?
Uh twenty four.
Twenty four, so if we give you five feet with easement plus to set it from the side of your building, that's uh seven feet then?
That's understood, yes.
Okay. That's getting close here to ten feet from back here or whatever, unless we go say six feet, you know, just uh. I guess it all depends, but.
Not seeing a plan, I don't I don't know.
I don't either, I without seeing a plan, but maybe we could divide in half. So then both can be happy.
To me, I would just go five. That's what the easement is and we don't have to split hairs. Any other comments, guys? Questions? Thank you.
May I be excused?
Yeah, you can have a seat if you'd like.
No, I mean, gone.
Oh, just wait for the.
We haven't voted yet.
All right, thank you.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking five feet would just be fine. Um I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I agree. Five feet seems appropriate.
I'd agree with that and it looks like there are a couple sheds on existing buildings already that are right at the property line as well. So this would be better than those situations.
Yep. I just need a motion then, guys.
Make a motion um with the amended five feet versus the three.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved in second that we approve it with the recommendation of five feet versus the three foot as applied. Is there any further discussion? Does anybody in the audience want to address this one? Seeing no one, we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a variance permit for Carl Knight. He's applied for a variance permit for a rear yard setback of eleven feet versus twenty five feet for an attached covered patio. This is located at three eighteen Pristine Street. Legal descriptions in the packet. Property is owned to R four high density residential.
Notices were sent out to neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. Um there was one response in favor that didn't make the packet. We have that in front of you. Um I did talk to a couple neighbors um around there as well and they had no issues. They said that the applicant came in and talked to them and they think it'd be a nice addition to the to the neighborhood. Um he's looking to do a patio over his uh or covered patio, excuse me, um with some outdoor grilling, TV, um things of that nature.
Similar to this photo?
Yep, exactly. This is from him.
This is not the property though. This is just something that they want to do.
Something that they he hired a designer and this is their rendering that they gave him. Yep. Obviously, there's probably a little bit more here than what he's gonna do with it with Ivy or something like that. But he does have a fence around the yard currently.
Questions, comments?
I think it looks great.
I think the only thing would be is we've had these before where they asked for a variance for an open type of structure and then they come back and they fill it in. Really wouldn't wanna see that again. So I would recommend if we're gonna make a motion here that we put a caveat on there that it doesn't get filled down into a four season porch later.
But who's gonna check on it?
That's the problem, nobody checks.
Complaint based.
It's completely frustrating.
And depending what you're gonna fill it in with, you know, they could go put the screens on and then close it in. And that's one step closer to the four season and then.
Yeah.
The next time they add something else, I think you take their word on it. Cause there's not gonna be any checks and balances to it.
Correct. Yeah, we took word on other people that did it and they attached it to their. Yeah, there's been cases like that before, but we have no control. But I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve it as presented. Are we going to put anything on it or we're just gonna go with it? Okay. Any further comment, questions? Anybody in the audience want to address this one? We're ready to vote and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit for Myron Van Busker Second Amended and Restated Re- Vol- I don't know how to say that trust. Um on behalf of Myron Van Busker Second Amendment and Restated Trust has applied for a conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling units between five and twelve units located in the nine hundred block of West Norway Avenue. Legal descriptions in the packet. Said real property is owned R three medium density residential. Mark.
Notices were sent out to the neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. Um applicant would like to build uh two fourplex dwelling units on this parcel. Um there's one response in favor and two responses opposed that made the packet. And then there were also three responses that were opposed that didn't make the packet, but you have in front of you. Um the responses from the people that were opposed were quest had questions about drainage, um the site layout, things of that nature. Um applicant, I believe, is here to answer any questions. Can I answer any questions that you have for me?
How are we accessing this site?
I'd suggest having the applicant come up and.
Sounds good. Would you like to add anything to this?
Jordan Heffler here on behalf of uh Van Busker Companies out of Sioux Falls. So um what you have in front of you is uh the site plan, which originally or the the GIS plan for uh what was originally supposed to be another twelve unit uh townhome condo building like what's uh in front of it at nine twenty in Norway Avenue. Um our anticipation and our our uh goal for this property would be to access it over top of our drainage that is owned by the Wheat Ridge Complex already. Um so we proposed two twenty four inch um culverts going over top of the drainage way. Um and then two fourplex townhome buildings similar to the ones that I asked you guys about up at Lakeview about two months ago. So exact same buildings, single story fourplex buildings. Um considerably, you know, uh easier on the eyes than the than the condo building that we originally proposed in the nineties, so.
So am I hearing that right? You're gonna build the what we provoked uh approved a few weeks ago, not this triangular or.
Correct, yep, yep. We would be building two single story fourplex buildings on this property.
Are they running east and west or north and south?
They'll be running east and west, yep, with a a private drive between the buildings, so the drive the garage doors will face each other.
Sure.
Access and then it's still up Norway here then?
Yep, the access will be through our Wheat Ridge Complex. Um it'll come, yeah, basically right there.
Come across to your.
Correct. Yep, so we will not be using the property that we own to the south.
Um this piece right here.
We will not be using that, no, no.
Any other questions?
Does the city have any concerns with drainage or emergency services with this location?
Uh from the public work standpoint, uh we we did notify them that we would require our drainage plan um that follows our ordinance. Um which I would assume that they would look at the detention requirements on their adjacent property as well. That's how that ties into the property they want to develop. We would verify with um fire to make sure that fire access is acceptable. Um but we wouldn't do that until uh prior to approving a a building permit. So we would follow all of our regular standards that we would follow if you do approve and move forward with the with the conditional use request of, I believe it's five to twelve units.
That would be our anticipation as well is that I don't want to spend the money on uh doing a hydraulic survey of our existing detention retainage until we know that we at least have this conditional use permit approved, so.
Makes sense. Joe, what kind of drainage problems does that property have currently?
I can't speak for the property itself, but I knew I do know on Norway, uh there is an intersection that has inlets that is uh lower that will have uh water stand at that intersection. Uh once the storm sewer catches up, uh the water does go away. I do believe uh with some stormwater modeling that was done, uh city stormwater does uh potentially back up into their pond. Um which I guess isn't there necessarily there requiring to hold. Um but there is some undersized storm sewer in the area which uh brings forward the drainage concerns.
Any plans to upgrade those in the future that you're aware of?
Immediate plans, no, uh but it is on our uh radar uh for an area that does need improvements. This is not tied uh to the Williams and Anderson area. Um this is the storm sewer that uh goes down Norway to Main Street and then goes through what we call uh the east central drainage area, which would be the Clockworks um era area and the old bear site on.
So you're saying that uh it backs up enough into the retained pond that creates a problem at all?
I don't think there's been any issues with any of the structures within those area of water, water affecting any structures.
None noted. This this property is actually uh per the survey that was just completed higher than the nine twenty property elevation, so. Um there is a few dips in the middle of the property um throughout the timeline that I've been working on this and the timeline that, you know, my company's owned this property since ninety two. So um it's always been the anticipation for this to continue on to the multifamily prod project and we see no reason why it why it shouldn't be with the elevation that it's set. The pond does hold water when it rains. Um as stated by Public Works, uh water backing up from city property into that is more of a concern than the water that's, you know, shed off of the parking lot from Wheat Ridge itself, so.
I'm wondering, since we're gonna go from grass to mostly impervious surface here with the development of this with new improvements, is that gonna help or hurt that situation?
So in a situation like this, an engineer would look at it, uh they'd look at the pond. Um you know, they might need to make the pond bigger. The pond might be sized adequately. You're not gonna know until you get into it.
Correct, and the it should have originally been sized appropriately for that twelve unit building, which has considerably more hard surface than my proposed plans, so.
Like I said previously, all that will be verified um if with the project they move forward with.
Okay. I think we have some people that wanna speak to us, so before we do that, let's get a motion and a second on the table and we can open up our discussions and we can vote yes or no from there.
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion to approve it. We can keep the discussion going.
Got the motion?
I'll second.
And a second that we approve it as uh condition recommend approval of the conditional use permit as presented. Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this item? Come on up.
Uh Dave Driscoll, we live on the kind of on the southeast corner of that property. And a portion of that property does drain off the southeast corner of that. And we have with heavy rainfalls and such, I mean, heavy, heavy rainfalls, we have had it back up into our backyard. Uh currently, I shouldn't think they've been bad neighbors with that property, but the weed control has not been the best. I've called to their main office. We've lived in that property twelve years, I guess. I've called to their office a couple different times on different years to address the situation. It was taken care of. After that, I got tired of calling. So then I'd see their manager over at their uh other apartments there. And they would take care of it. But then it was all forgotten and I got tired of calling. But it's just a yellow field out there. Uh one comment made to me from the office in Sioux Falls, well, well, dandelions are gonna grow. And I said, well, Lake Lorraine doesn't have dandelions down there, I betcha. But yeah, our concern is that we have proper dammy art proper drainage. And I guess the question would be on snow removal. Where that will be piled, will will they be able to use the drainage ditches for the snow removal? And it would be kind of nice to see just uh some kind of schematic drawing on how what the layout is gonna be with the homes and stuff on there. And what they're gonna have for storage units and exactly how they lay, I think he said east to west, maybe they said. But it would be nice to have just a a short snapshot of that as a neighbor to see how it was, but. I will say with their apartments, they take excellent care of their grounds over there with both the mowing and spring. But this being a big lot, this has kind of been overlooked a lot. They did a good job of mowing this year, but uh spring just doesn't get done. So.
Thank you.
Like that's about all I've got, I guess, on that there, so.
Thank you.
So what we're doing now is just the conditional use? The next thing would be a plan approval? We've already seen the plan, okay.
It's it's really up to us to say that that's a suitable use of that property.
Right.
And then listen to concerns, of course, and I think the city is saying, you know, there's going to be a drainage study done here or a plan on this, so. I would hope that some of your concerns with the backing up of the water into that property there is gonna be alleviated because this will be designed properly to take care of all that. So this should actually help that. The question goes back to, do we we want to put an apartment building there? I I would like to hear about the snow removal if if you could follow up with that. And I see a hand back there, we'll get to you.
Well, before I address the storm removal, I just wanna tell you guys, I run the construction department, so I don't run the I don't run property management, so. Um but what I will say is that this property is currently being designed. Obviously, I put a hold on it until I figured out how this conditional use uh went through. This property is being designed uh both for snow removal purposes and for fire rescue with a hammerhead at the end of it, so at the very far west side of the property. Um which would be the dead end. It'll have a hammerhead turnaround um built into it. Um that hammerhead will have to be, you know, in that side yard or that backyard setback a little bit, but uh we are anticipating that being a a portion of the concerns um for that. Uh with snow removal and with garbage, we are planning to in to utilize the existing Wheat Ridge property. Um obviously, with that being a dead end turnaround, I won't be able to have tenants in there um if there's snow in front of all of their property. So on a heavy snowfall, we'll most likely have to back drag it into Wheat Ridge, so. Which is part of why we are, you know, accessing it through our private means instead of trying to utilize the public road, so.
Thank you. Yes, go forward, please. Yep, you're up.
Hi, my name is Colleen Hunt and I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Um we are owners in the condo building that is to the south of the property. Number two oh three is the one we own. Um my question is, our property abuts to the east um access that they're saying they're not gonna use. Um our parking lot does continue around the back of our building. And I was wondering uh what kind of provision or consideration would you give that our parking lot and the backside driveway does not become an emergency access? Will they be providing any kind of fencing to secure their property so that people aren't cutting through on our land that our condo association owns?
Sounds to me like an applicant answered there. You might as well stay up there.
Yes, so with with that, um obviously, holding off on our site plan, uh part of this could be solved by that, but there's no access for motorway um on the south side of that. The only um access for vehicles onto this property would be through the back of that um Wheat Ridge Complex off the back of the parking lot through that private road that we're planning to build. So um there would be no way for a car to more or less drive through the condo complex. There won't be a connecting road of any kind. They'd have to literally drive through the condo's back um lot line into our backyards, into our sodded backyard area, so.
But. That answer your question?
Not really, I'm sorry. You're still gonna have foot traffic that's going to see that as an easy access to come through and um you know, there's gonna be foot traffic and such. I'm just asking that they maybe make the provision to put up a a secure fencing so that our property doesn't become a thoroughfare for people walking through, cutting through to the south to Norway.
Thank you. So you've heard that concern? Take that back and you can do with what you like. Yeah, so see your hand, go forward.
My name is Rich Dedman. And going along with Colleen has said, the access to the lot through our condo is very, very easy. In fact, we've had a lot of of traffic through there, walking traffic. We've had people from the apartment complex using our garbage disposal, our dumpster for their garbage. And uh coming off Norway, going straight north on the east side of the building, that's the straight shot right into that lot. And when people see that, they're gonna use it. So I think we need to have something there. Whether it be signs, whether it be a fence, or whether it be something, because people will see it and go. So that's my thing, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this?
Well, they've kind of talked. Uh my name is Norma Apple and I live in the condos. Uh they've talked about the vehicles. Uh my concern is if they don't have the roads and everything ready before they start, we're gonna have construction people coming through our lot, cause it's a very easy, it's just just right straight through. Another thing is the emergency vehicles, garbage truck, moving vans. Will there be enough room on that other side of their garages to get that kind of equipment through? Uh the third thing is the the drainage. And I know we've talked about it. Um I've lived there twenty five years. And if we have heavy rains, that ditch fills and overflows and takes at least eight to ten hours to completely drain. I have pictures on my phone that I can show you if you would like to of when the ditch is full and not ditch the ditch in the side, the ditch to the back. and not ditch, the ditch in the side, the ditch to the back is, is completely full too. Um, another thing with them building, right now, the, um, absorption of the rain that is going on that property just absorbs. If they're building, that's gonna be concrete or asphalt, which means their drainage is probably going to go into the, the ditch. I don't know how much more the ditch can take when it overflows now. On the side of our building, we have four people that have air conditionings just from the last, uh, time it filled up, like, two feet away from our air conditioners and our garages on that side. So there is a big drainage problem. And that's my main concern.
Thank you. Yeah, so certainly as, as Joe has said, we're, that's gonna have to be studied and, and taken into effect before anything gets approved for a building permit, so.
But I would think it'd be more controlled though, too.
It should be very well designed, correct, yeah, it should actually be done right, so. I would hope that a lot of this stuff gets alleviated through this project. Anybody else want to address this item? This is up for conditional use permit, so, is there another one? Yes, go forward.
Yeah, you know, this is a quick question, but.
Can you state your name? Can you state your name first, please?
Oh, Paige Raggy.
Thank you.
Yep, fifteen thirteen, South Miller. That might help too. But could you just, um, elaborate on which directions, please?
I can actually show you, it's a terrible copy. And I can get this to Mark as well, but that's our plan, is just to come off the back of that last building and have a townhome here and a townhome here.
Oh, this direction, okay, cause that's where we're at, right there. Okay, and then you're gonna do a parking lot here?
Not a parking lot, there's garages for each of the units.
Ah.
Um, so there's no parking lot, there will be no outdoor parking.
Okay.
On this piece of property, there's just no room for it.
I see.
The, we have an existing parking lot at the Wheat Ridge Townhome or the Wheat Ridge Apartment Complex. This complex will be a, uh, an addition to that complex, they're, they're not going to be two separate things, we're not selling these properties off, they will just be an additional eight units that are managed by Wheat Ridge Townhomes. So they can utilize the parking lot, they can utilize the garbage service, um, all with that existing complex, so. Or, Mark has got, uh, one of our buildings pulled up here.
So this was a conditional use that was just approved last time, and it was taking this building, mirroring it to the north, um, and then obviously doubling, or the, the driveway to stay the same, you have your parking in front of your garage doors. Now, this site plan, you would actually take and flip over this way because access is gonna be from the west, not the east like this one is. But this gives you an idea of how it would be laid out now.
Our units at Wheat Ridge compared to these Lake Views, our units get smaller by twenty square feet. So the building is eighty square feet smaller than fifteen seventeen, so, but very comparable, very, you know, aesthetically pleasing as far as a townhome building goes.
Yeah, can that be sent around? Can you, can we see that?
Yeah, it's a terrible photo copy, but.
Anybody else want to address the side of all that's going on? This is for a conditional use permit, so we're free to put conditions on this for recommendation or not?
But to me, it sounds like the, the drainage issue will probably solve itself with the new study. But I do definitely see the concern with people walking through there. Whether we put a conditional use that they have to put a fence up or something to keep that foot traffic, I, I can just see that happening, walking through there, walking down to the great life, whatever.
I agree, I'd like to see something to prevent that foot traffic because it is, it does seem like if you're gonna be on foot, that's the most logical, easiest way to get, get to Norway is, is through the, the condo, um, parking lot.
So we do have a motion and a second already, we could, uh, motion for an alternate and then vote on that and then send this through. All right, or, go ahead.
I, I guess I should have, I didn't know if I could comment on their comment, but we do have a fence plant for this property, so, just to the south and the east, so.
What'd you say about the south property?
We have a fence plant for the back of this property, so.
From the back of the property?
Just south, just the south side. I guess, my main thing with that is, I, I would say to anyone that lives in any town, if you don't have a fence in your backyard, people can walk through your yard regardless of, of where you live, who, who your neighbors are, I mean, um, to fence off this entire property is about sixty thousand dollars, so. Um, I guess, we have no problem fencing off between the, the townhomes, um, and if we need to fence off the east side, we sure can. Um, you know, I, I don't see an issue with it myself, but obviously, um, everything that we do budgetary is a budgetary restriction on the property, so it'll raise our rents, um, unfortunately, so. Um, but I don't see an issue with it, so.
The majority is east side, already.
Correct, yep, so if we put up a fence on the east side, we just, right.
And I've had, have had traffic through there before, not a lot, but I've had traffic through there, through the apartments.
Definitely, I mean, that's.
That's right. Alright, so do we wanna amend the motion or do we wanna keep the original motion? Down here is what I understand, the south side. You guys wanna amend the motion or you wanna keep it as is and go with this plan? We, we don't really know what his plan is, but we're talking about a conditional use permit, do we want townhomes on this property? That's what we're talking about today. So we're just gonna throw something out in the air there, huh? Yes. Yep.
I just, can they come to the podium?
Yep, come to the podium, please.
If anybody else has comments, can you stand in line so we can get these moving?
I'm from the condo also, my name's Ann Morris. My question is, can you guarantee us that you're not gonna have any of your equipment coming through our parking lot to do the building?
Yes.
None of your workers are gonna be parking back there? Maybe we've only got seven or eight parking spots, period, as it is.
I can guarantee you that, because we perimeter, we perimeter fence our parkour projects with this whole fence. So there would be no reason, there would be no purpose for anyone to park back there, they would not be able to gain access through a Van Bussker jump site.
Okay, and my next question is, who owns the drainage ditch? Is that city property or is that Van Bussker property? Then it should be cleaned up. I mean, it's in bad shape, there's trees growing there, there's all kinds of crap down there.
Okay, thank you. Alright, do we wanna mend it with the fence or do we wanna go with the original motion? It's up to you guys.
Well, if we know they're gonna, their plan is to put a fence in there and they follow through, I don't know if we need to change it.
What type of fence?
Yeah, I think we're getting into details we don't need to get into today, this is the conditional use permit, so let's, let's vote on that. Let's go with the original motion, I don't hear another motion for an amendment, so, um, is there any further discussion amongst this body? We're ready to vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a hearing in action on establishing the boundaries and approval of the project plan for tax increment financing district number forty-three.
Alright. So we've seen this piece of property recently, this was, uh, is lot two, uh, track one, Singapore slab. Um, it has been annexed into city limits, a notice was sent out to the, the paper, it's published there. Um, walk through it, this is gonna be on behalf of, uh, PP SL, um, which, I had it right here, uh, Peacefield Pine Senior Living in Mitchell. This will be for a senior living facility, it's fifty-nine thousand square foot facility, includes twenty-one assisted living units, eighteen independent living units, and sixteen memory care units. Um, there's also going to be a common dining room, lounge, multipurpose, exercise room, theater, pubs, salon, residential laundry. Um, here's the site layout for you, um, with this, again, this is just the area in red that we were talking about for this boundary. Um, they have some existing facilities in other towns, this is just giving you a background of what they have already done for, um, for them. The total increment for the TIF that they're requesting, TIF eligible cost, excuse me, is two million eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Excuse me, two million eight hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, um, that's a total that they'd be able to receive, um, through the twenty years. Um, it is a developer financed TIF, it's a grant passed through, through the city, um, the city is also part of this, uh, TIF for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, for some administration costs with this one, um, they've given out their employee benefit packages and wage ranges. It is a bare lot, it currently, um, so we'd be doing improvements to it, the tax value of it right now is twenty-six thousand and forty dollars. Um, after the project is completed, uh, the estimated tax value for this would be a hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, be thirty plus employees working at this with a payroll of one point five million. Let's see, what else? Here's where it shows what their existing is for twenty-six thousand and change, um, we are not, we have our city tax base at one point five, we're not meeting, getting up to that ten percent, otherwise we wouldn't be able to do this, so we're still under that portion of it. Here's the breakdown for the projects, the discretionary grants and then the administrative costs totaling the two eight nine three. There'll be a con, a developer's agreement for, um, the TIF and then also with the city as well, or, excuse me, public works. What else? Um, total project estimated about thirteen million. Breakdown of the engineers. Robable cost for, um, infrastructure in the area. Right here shows the increment that will be produced. It'll get to two point nine three five, uh, million and, like I said, they're requesting two eight nine three, so there's a little bit left over there. Um, but they'd still only be able to get the requested amount of the two eight nine three. Breakdown of where the costs are going for the TIF. Tax levy that they're using for this. The legal description is lot two, Singapore slab track one, um. It is zoned urban development currently, um, it is being requested to rezone to, um, lake shore development, so that is heartening here as well, just saying that they're requesting to rezone at the same time. And then you have a letter from Department of Revenue for preliminary stating that this would be an economic development TIF. Dustin, anything?
And? I don't think any additional, um, obviously, staff followed the normal process of, uh, working with the developer to review the project plan, um, make sure that it was meeting all the statutory requirements and requirements of our, uh, Mitchell TIF handbook, so. I think Mark's covered pretty much all the details, um, anything you wanna add?
Can you touch on a little bit of the recent, and we just went through zoning of this property, did we not?
Uh, we are in the process still of rezoning this property.
Second, or a second?
Second, yeah, it has passed first hearing at, uh, council, second reading. And hearing will be at their next council meeting, and that's when this TIF would also be approved or denied at that same council meeting. So we're running them concurrently, so that way they can finish at the same time.
We're not changing the zoning of this property again, are we?
The request right now is for that piece of property. They're rezoning it to what they requested before, it's not gonna be something different. Does that make sense?
This is just a name change?
Don't.
Wasn't it, it was a PUD before, right?
It was urban development before, the whole twenty-five acres was urban development. Uh, they requested a PUD for the whole twenty-five acres, that's what they're stating in this, is that they are in the process of uh, changing from urban development to that PUD that you guys have already seen and approved, or recommended approval, and still at council's spot.
Name change, it's just restated.
Correct, yep.
There wouldn't be any additional rezoning after the one that's pending.
Yep.
Alright, with that then, the first order is to approve the boundaries.
Motion approved.
Second. Second, that we approve the boundaries as presented in that package, is there any further discussion?
Uh, just suggesting roll call.
Anybody in the audience want to address it? Alright, we're ready to vote then, we're gonna go roll call.
Dunkle. Havlic, yes. Osterlu.
Yes.
Schurz.
Yes.
Sonny.
Abstain.
Genslinger.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, and we have the approval of the project plan. Move to approve.
Second.
Second, that we approve the project plan as presented, any further discussion on that item?
Just one more thing, Mark, that I don't know if we've touched on yet, but just wanted to confirm and make everyone aware that this specific parcel has been annexed already, the rest of it has not, but this one has gone through the annexation property, otherwise we wouldn't be doing it as a city TIF.
Okay. We had a motion and a second, did we not?
Yep.
So, any further discussion on that item? Anybody in the audience? We're ready to vote then, we'll go roll call on that one too.
Havlic, yes. Osterlu.
Yes.
Schurz.
Yes.
Sonny.
Abstain.
Dunkle. Genslinger.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, next item on the agenda is a plat for focused land and cattle LLC, the legal descriptions in the packet, Davis and Tensel.
The applicant would like to flat off seventeen point four six five acres, um, he's going to sell it to the people that are buying the land to the north. Access is off of four oh eighth to the, uh, to the east, if they would be requiring, um, a drive through there, that would be approved by county, um. It's within three miles of city limits, but it's not in ETJ, so therefore it's the county's, uh, zoning jurisdiction for this one. Um, they'll meet at their July meetings for their hearings on it, I can answer any questions that you have for me.
Pretty straightforward.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and second, that we approve the plat as presented, any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? Ready to vote then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a plat for CJM Consulting, legal descriptions in the packet.
This is the next phase of the project that we've been working on for a little while, um, previous plats were in the county, um, so those have been annexed into city now. So lot two C one and two B one were the ones that were in county before. Um, there is still a portion out here that is still remaining in the county, um, but we're not talking about that part with the plat, there isn't easement to get to that, that was on the original, um, plating of this area and that stays with this. Um, there was a lot one that's being vacated, um, by vacating that. Commerce Street, which they are plating with this, gets rid of a goofy kind of curb in there for the road, um, so they're helping out with that. And lot one is because there was part of lot one, excuse me, lot, uh, one A is because of part of the original. Is because of part of the original lot that we're vacating went into that spot, so. It wasn't a right of way before, so it would just be there by itself, but it wouldn't be conforming to zoning size. So that's why they went with that small strip that meets the, the six thousand square feet that's required for that area. Um, I can answer any other questions that you have.
Will that eventually get replatted into something else later? This is just for right now.
Yep, that's correct.
Is that twenty, oh, I guess I, that, that's, I see the city limit, but is that twenty foot wide? Private access wide enough that. To get to that lot if it ever gets divided?
If this one would get divided?
No, if that.
If this one?
I know it's not the one that would, but if it ever comes to point for that separately, is that twenty foot easement enough?
Twenty foot is adequate access to a lot, yep.
Okay.
I would imagine if it needed to be wider as part of the purchase agreement for that parcel, the easement would be widened or the access would be sorted out.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Ready for a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
And second that we approve the plat as presented. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a plan approval for Superior Steel.
Um, Superior Steel has come in for a building permit. This is his own highway business at twenty-four twenty-four West Havens, so therefore has come in front of this board for approval. Um, if you remember, um, October tenth of twenty-three, they came in for approval for this seventy by one hundred four. Uh, building over here. Um, they're proposing to put an addition of office spaces in between that and this existing. Building right here, and once this addition is completed, then they would rehab this uh existing. So essentially, it's gonna be um sixty by thirty. Uh, yeah, sixty wide by thirty deep. That'll actually get all remodeled throughout the whole thing, but addition first, then remodel this. To have a, a new area there as well. Can answer any questions that you have?
Let's see whether this would affect anybody really, other than a little bit of drainage off the roof.
And it's hard surfaced already.
There you go.
I'm move to approve.
I'll second.
Moving second that we approve the plan as presented. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next item on the agenda is a plat for JTZ Properties. Legal descriptions in the packet.
Back out into this area, Singapore slab area. Um, lot one and lot two have been previously approved. Lot two was. Annexed into city limits. Lot three, not lot four now, are what they'd like to plaid off next. It is still in the county, but it's within the one mile, so it's the ETJ, so it's city zoning jurisdiction, which. Right now, it's urban development, but in impending, moving it to the, um, the PUD, um, that's going through council right now. Um, I can answer any questions that you have on this.
And this is following along with the plan that we've all seen and recommended approval on.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moving second that we approve the plat as presented. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? Going roll call on this one.
Havlic, yes. Oscar Lou.
Yes.
Schurz.
Yes.
Sonny.
Upstain.
Dunkle.
Yes.
Genslinger.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next items on the agenda, we've got four different plaits for Prairie Ethanol. Legal descriptions are in the packet. We can talk about all four maybe, but we probably have to vote on every single one of them, so let's.
Yeah, they're all doing the exact same thing. Um, the poet or Prairie Ethanol LLC is purchasing land from their budding neighbors. Um, because they're expanding their rail line. Um, so they're purchasing for track five, track six, track seven. Um, just a little bit of land to place another line. Um, there is a water. Uh, pipe that goes under some of this land, um, for their source, so there is an easement with this. Um, they have reached out, their engineers have reached out to the city, talked to where they might need to do some changes or something like that, so we're working with them on that. Um, the only thing that's different that I would say with any of the four motions. Um, I did receive an updated um plat this morning, and it's. It's just purely for putting on chair, vice chair, or treasurer, deputy treasurer. It's just for the signature blocks, cuz that's what um the county requires for those. So we do have to amend it, probably saying that we're mending the new one, not what you're seeing on.
And which one is that?
Uh, all four, all four of them are gonna be the same way.
All four of them are that language, okay.
Yep, but they're buying it, um, the land from. Lindauer's Trust and then uh Rural Water LLC. Um, it's between the two of them. Um, townships have been in contact with how it's gonna work for the new rail line coming across on uh. Two fifth, or two forty-eighth, and actually at um, two forty-ninth, they will end. Before. Getting to the road, so there won't be any new coming across at two forty-nine. And uh, four oh six there, there'll be a crossover back to the single lane before it gets to this intersection. And we had concerns about that because it is a goofy intersection right now.
Yeah.
Uh, but they are working with townships for all that as well.
Okay. I'm gonna lump all this together, just ask for questions, comments on all this before we vote for all four. Okay, let's start with the first one then. We need to motion for approval with the amended language.
I'll move to approve. Second.
And second that we approve with the amended language. Any further discussion? There's nobody left in the audience, so we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Uh, let's do it for the second one.
Move to approve.
Second.
With the amendments.
With the amendments.
Moving second that we approve with the amendments, second plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Third one, track seven.
Move to approve. Second.
And second with the amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. And finally plat four, track eight.
Move to approve with amendments.
Second.
And second with the amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Finally, we have a plan approval for Corona Village located at eleven oh one South First Street.
Applicant came in for a building permit um for this location. Um, it is zoned highway business, so therefore it requires this board's approval. Um, applicant would like to uh put an addition on the back for some more storage. Um, still needs a setback back there and then. Um, put some new roofs, or excuse me, put roofs over top of covered patio. Um, you can see that in their drawing. Um, they've had the patio there for a while. Now they'd just like to put a roof over top of it, and it still meets all the setbacks. Can answer any questions?
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Yep, move to approve.
Second.
And second that we approve the plan as presented. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Any other business coming forward this board? Good. If you need to address the board on an item that was not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium, state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Seeing as no one is coming forward, we are adjourned.